Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Selectment's Meeting of Tuesday, June 4th, 2017. Would you like to rise and we'll salute the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion to approve the expense warrant from six four nineteen for fourteen thousand eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
You have that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Then I would also like to approve Selectmen's Minutes from four twenty-six nineteen.
You have that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. And then we'd like to acknowledge the minutes and reports from other departments. ZBA minutes for three five nineteen and three nineteen nineteen, Cultural Council minutes for five six nineteen, and Grant Writer Monthly Report, May twenty nineteen. Motion for that.
You have a motion to acknowledge.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. For announcements tonight, the Brookfield Fire Battalion will be holding its annual Father's Day Chicken BBQ on Sunday, June 16th. This is our big annual fundraiser. We have been doing it since 1950. Tickets are available for department members who are calling the station at 508-677-3306. For a fifteen dollar donation, you get a half a barbecue chicken, salad, dinner roll, baked potato, and individual pie. Serving is from twelve noon until one thirty. All meals are packed to go, but there will be limited seating at the station, and if you want to eat there. Senator Gobie's aide will hold office hours in Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, June 5th. Do you have anything to add?
To that one, to the advisory board, that Senator Gobie's aide will be in this room tomorrow, and that aide has been talking with DOT with respect to legal expenses the town has absorbed for different land takings, and so we might have some interest as to his progress in convincing DOT that something that they thought was a little bit of money was a lot of money, and that the town shouldn't have to pay for it. So we'll see where that ends.
And also tonight, I would like to thank, at the Memorial Day Services, we had two young ladies from the elementary school did the Gettysburg Address. One was at the down to cemetery, and the other one was at the common. And Edith Simpson and Sarah Wexler. And then also Flanders Field, we had Corinne Kelly and Haley Powers. And then I would also like to thank the Boy Scouts who filled in at last minute to be color guides for us. And those are Corbin Gadboys, Mason Oxman, Noah Auburn, and Donald Parks. And I want to thank them all for all their help, and it's nice to see the young people get involved in the community, and we're hoping this will be continued over the years. Our first thing on the agenda this evening is an MVP listening session with Andrew Lowe.
And as Andrew gets up, the other thing that happened was the scouts were in the room at the listening session earlier, so glad to have more at the second session.
Didn't they, Brian told me that they got some badge because of them.
They can apply for a communications badge. Yep. So good luck.
Thank you. Am I loud enough for the camera here? Great, thank you. Okay, so my name's Andrew Lowe, and I'm here from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, which is a state-designated regional planning agency for Brookfield and certain other communities in Willshire County. Here's another, Montali U. McAlley, who's over here. I would ask that folks that are in the audience, sign the signing sheet that's floating around just about when this event is taking place. And there are also a couple handouts floating around if you're interested in what we're talking about. So, as I mentioned, I'm here to talk about the Municipal Vulnerability Disparagement Program in Brookfield. So this is the public listening session component. This is a state-funded grant program that takes place about two years ago to help community plan for adaptations to climate change and how climate change is impacting natural hazards. So communities that complete this process become MVP certified communities and become eligible for quite a substantial grant program called the MVP Action Grant Program, which is set as several tens of millions of dollars to fund over the next few years. The opportunity also gives you bonus points on various other state and grant programs like MassWorks. So the MVP program is based on the Community Resilience Building Framework, as well by the Major Conservancy and the National Organization in Spiritville, which was a couple of years ago. Thus far, seventy-one other Massachusetts municipalities have completed this process, and about eighty more are doing it in the same ground that Brookfield is. So it's about a hundred and fifty out of the three hundred and fifty-one communities in the state thus far. So the goals of the MVP program are basically fourfold, so to define your extreme weather and natural hazards that are impacted by climate change, to identify existing and future vulnerabilities and strengths, to develop and prioritize actions for the community and broader stakeholders, and to identify opportunities for the community to advance those actions to help reduce risks and build resilience against natural hazards and climate change. So one question that we do get in various communities where we've been doing this work is, how does this develop natural hazard mitigation plan, which communities have been doing for the last few decades? So there is some overlap, certainly. MVP, however, is a longer-term program because it's looking at climate change in the future. Natural Hazard Reduction universally is a five-year plan that looks retroactive to the hazards that have already been happening. So Brookfield's Hazard Reduction Plan was completed last year, the company completed last year. And so that, it's a very regimented process, whereas MVP is more of a consensus-building and awareness-building exercise than it is a detailed plan. So again, this is a community-driven process. It's been led by a project organ, who's here with us tonight, Captain Baraka, which has been leading a core team of town officials. That's included Selectmen Snyder, Chief Martell from the Fire Department, Don Taff from the Water Commission, and Ken Cleveland, who's also here from the Conservation Commission. That team met, I think it was five times over the last seven or eight months now. Central Massachusetts Planning Commission was identified as the service provider. We've been certified by the state to do this kind of thing. And the big piece of this project was the workshop. So it was an all-day event that was held in this room back in April twenty-five. There were eleven different town officials and related stakeholders here, aside from our group from the Land Commission. That was an invitation-only workshop, but tonight is a public listening session. It wasn't anyone, just some of you are here. So the first step in the workshop process was to identify the top four hazards in town that are being impacted by climate change. So even the secure flooding, severe storms, dry droughts, like wildfire, and severe storms. I won't get into too much detail, because we've got a lot of things on the agenda tonight. But flooding is any kind of stuff, a stormwater runoff rivers that you can't really. And as the climate changes, there's a lot of data showing that we're getting fewer rainstorms, but they're more intense, and we're getting more precipitation overall as a result. Winter storms, so we used to get nice clean snowstorms and cold and snow-stripped, but as the climate's been changing and as the trajectory's changed, we're getting more things like sleet and ice, and these things that change from one to the other. In fact, again, there are storms, a much bigger mess that's harder for the highway part to deal with, harder for school bus transportation, roads. That's another. Heat, obviously, parts are warmer, climate change is a bit colder. And it has direct impacts where people go working outside, are very old or they're very young, can also be vulnerable. But it also results in more droughts. Even though we're getting more precipitation overall, it's being spaced out a bit. So instead of getting fairly regular smaller rain and snowstorms, we're getting much bigger ones that are longer periods apart. So that means that we're most susceptible to drought now, as I think we all remember from twenty sixteen, where it dries here fifty years. So that's an issue. And that also leads into wildfires. So as we get drier weather for more time, more heat, and our forests are also being damaged by things like invasive pests and bigger windstorms, we just have more potential for wildfire than it wants to. And the last one here is severe storms. That really is major wind events, because we addressed the flooding issues separately here. But that's severe thunderstorms, tropical storms, twenty-year-olds. So taking those four hazards, the MVP program requires that each community look at the impacts of those hazards on three main topics, so infrastructure, society, and environment. Infrastructure being things like your water system, your drainage system, town buildings, your electrical grid. Society in this context can mean things more like, you know, do you have demographic groups who are more vulnerable? Do you have neighborhoods that are more vulnerable? And also kind of overarching governmental issues, so your town bylaws, town policies, that type of thing. And environment, it kind of speaks for itself, but it's your wetlands, your natural resources, and that's sort of, I don't know if you catch up on my notes here. So at the workshop, the activities split into two tables to have really an all-day discussion about this process. And during the course of the event, there are probably about a hundred and fifty items that were discussed by the groups. It's a long stretch, and I'm not going to get into that, I'm just going to give a few highlights here. So on the environmental side, some of the major issues identified were the Quaybot River, invasive species, both aquatic and non-aquatic, so the gypsy moth, millfoil aquatic species. Septic systems were an issue, because as I think most of us know here, there's no sewer system in Brookfield, and as the climate changes, that impacts the way septic systems function, because your water table's a little higher than once less. And wetlands, so Clarence mentioned that the previous version of this listening session earlier today, Brookfield is an awful high percentage of town that is either waters or wetland. So some of the strategies that the attendees at the workshop developed to help address these issues were to complete a comprehensive plan, look at the water quality of the Quaybot River and other water qualities. They wanted to complete a study, a management plan about invasive species, so there are things that can be done to address some of those. They wanted to increase the water health inspections of septic systems to make sure they're all functioning as they were permitted to do. And they wanted to look for more options to do what's called low-impact development in town. So that means, instead of just building drain pipes that takes groundwater away, it could be things like building that rain garden, or putting in natural soils and things to kind of soak the water up and let it evaporate on its own, rather than having to pay a lot of money to take it away and dump it somewhere else. So this map, seeing the hashing, it's, I don't know if this will show up, but the hash mark areas, those are your FEMA-designated flood zones. The green areas are your state-designated wetlands. So as Clarence mentioned earlier, there are an awful lot of parts of town that are susceptible to flooding. So societal issues, the major issues identified were, along with the neighborhoods, the Quaybot stream in Piney Neighborhood is very low-lying, I think it's experienced a few verticals for over two years. There's a public education and awareness issue that we brought, just to make sure that the community is aware of these issues and trying to be more prepared. And as part of that, that reverse nine-one-one system that's already in place, perhaps we utilize more on this front to try to get the word out. And there was also an issue with the number of town-owned properties and how hazards could affect them. So strategies that were discussed on this front were to help evaluate your evacuation procedures and to develop a planning plan for these flood prone neighborhoods. Also to develop more of an education and outreach program, to help increase awareness of all climate hazards and natural hazards in general. And I think that was also, which is vulnerable populations here, a big part of that was to try to identify not just locations, but people who would be vulnerable. So Brookfield has a high population of seniors.
And see, to that point, you reminded me, and seniors living alone.
Yes. Many seniors living alone, and many living in concentrated areas too, within the mobile home parks, which I believe are fifty-five plus or within that age range. So again, another strategy was to continue to support and maybe enhance the use of that reverse nine-one-one program. And then another was to analyze your town-owned properties and structures. So one thing could be to look at other opportunities to increase your water system, using town-owned property, that's something I'll get to in one second. Could have enhanced sheltering, natural hazards. You could also, I know there's an interest in a visitor center, try to capitalize on the arena site and other things there. Again, this map is kind of showing some of the things, the previous ones, you've got your flood zones in the circles, and the green, the different flood zones. But what I wanted to highlight here was, you can see these little red dots in Quaybot Pond and South Pond, and those indicate homes that are in the FEMA-designated flood zone, so they're more at risk. And these orange circles indicate areas where there are homes that have made repeated claims against their flood insurance. So this just illustrates the concentrated neighborhood-level risk that some of the locations have. So infrastructure, so the biggest one I think that was discussed was the water system here in town. So I think folks are familiar that there is a municipal water system that's mostly in this part of town, so the northern part of town, on the border. But anything south of the Quaybot River does not have access to municipal water. Another issue was municipal buildings, and drainage and culverts was another big one that was discussed. As we get these bigger precipitation events, the hundred, hundred-and-twenty-year-old culverts that might be this big, you know, they probably need to be this big, and in a different form than they would have been in the past, to accommodate the storms that we're getting now, as well as to minimize the ecological impact of the culverts. The elementary school was another item that was addressed in the workshop. So strategies for this one include completing an engineering analysis of the water system, and potentially look at, are there opportunities, is there a need to expand the water system coverage to the southern part of town? Excuse me. Also, the group wanted to look at installing backup generators to have more of the town facilities, including this building and the fire department. Another piece was to make sure all the town facilities are ADA-accessible, because some of them may be utilized for shelters in the event of a natural hazard, a natural disaster. The group wanted to complete an engineering inventory of all the storm drains and culverts in town. So again, a lot of them are undersized, they may be in poor condition in some cases, so they wanted to do an inventory analysis to see which ones need to be replaced. And last, about the school, like many of the other towns, we could use a backup generator, because it is your designated emergency shelter, but it doesn't have all of the equipment that is generally preferred for emergency shelters. And this will be hard to see, I think, but these light blue lines kind of up there. In this area, these are your main networks, and it's really just in this area more of the Quaybot River, which is right here. Your drinking water comes from a well field here in East Brookfield. And then everybody else down here is on private wells, except for these orange areas, which are the well fields of the three mobile home parks. So as part of this process, the town requested extra grant funding, and was awarded extra grant funding from the state to do a survey of everybody who's south of the Quaybot River to try to get into, you know, is there really a need, is there a desire of folks in that part of town to connect to town water, because there were a lot of calls from that part of town, I guess during the twenty sixteen drought, where people with their wells running dry, or kind of discolored, or not usable with low pressure. And I guess that has happened in previous droughts as well. So we worked with the Water Commission, the Water Department, to develop a survey, you see a little screenshot up here, they had twenty-four questions, it went onto everybody, all businesses and all homes south of the river in the December issue of the Brookfield Citizen. And the results, again, twenty-four questions, I'm not going to get into the results of all the questions, but just as a quick summary of the results, we had sixty-one responses. Of respondents, everybody was a property owner, I think in that part of town, it's outside of the mobile home parks, it's mostly ownership. Beginning with ninety-three percent of folks have a private well, so the remainder of the respondents either were sharing a well with one or two neighbors, or a handful were mobile home residents. Iron was commonly called out as a water chemistry issue, so about thirty-nine percent of folks had issues with iron in groundwater. A percentage of it, thirteen percent, had natural gas issues. But about forty percent of people with their wells are very satisfied with their well water. And about another thirty percent or so were quite satisfied. Most of the rest were moderately satisfied, so for the most part, they were very satisfied with their well water. Fifty-four percent of folks have backup generators, which is important, because if you're on well, and your electricity goes out, and your water goes up with it. So that's an important resilience factor in that part of town. So eighty percent of the wells weren't troubled more than ten years ago, but almost sixty percent have not been maintained in the last five years. And getting into kind of the big results here, which I thought was kind of interesting, so one-third of respondents just have no interest in connecting to town water at all. And then one-third are very interested in connecting to town water, no matter what the conditions are. And then there were a bunch of people who were somewhere in between those ranges, it was clearly split right down the road. But in terms of the expense, most people were willing to pay only thirty dollars or less, and that's both for water service, as you said, that's a monthly rate, both for service and for any betterment costs needed to install water in that part of town. So that, that may be an issue there, where it's probably not a high enough monthly rate to pay for making that level of improvement. But there are more densely populated parts of the southern part of town where it might be doable on a relatively poor basis. So that's the water survey. So the next steps here, there's a final report, updating the results of the workshop, that will go into the state by the end of the month, and he has pretty well tracked that one up. And that will be available on CMMC's website by the end of the week. And I think we probably have the town put up on your website as well. So we won't be available for public comments for a period of time before this goes to the state. Once that goes into state, it'll be designated an MVP community. There's an annual report that you have to complete to maintain that status. The next round of the MVP Action Grants are supposedly available late in the summer. The state's typically been a little slow on their timeline, so let's call it sometime late this year. So you will be eligible to apply for funding in that round. I have a couple of links here, a little more information about the program. And that's all for today. I'm happy to take questions from the board, from the audience, or whatever you prefer.
So the good news is, more grant money available.
Yes.
Back to the towns, projects with respect to infrastructure, drainage, and the like. We identified a year ago two major areas, Molasses Hill Road and Rice Corner slash Gay Road, as far as areas that needed to be concerned, we needed to consider drainage and the like. We were not allowed, we were not awarded the grant last year. Their recommendation to us was that we had just too much in the bucket with both of the projects listed. They asked us to split it. Cindy, the Highway Department, has taken that grant. It'll be a strap grant. It will be focused on Rice Corner Gay, so that we can see what we can do to improve drainage. And when we talk, we have two culverts in that system that are definitely undersized. In fact, we had ecological restoration up about a month ago now, where we visited the Rice Corner Cross Culvert. And if you ever have an opportunity to go visit that culvert to your auto, but we, once we were able to get that grant, that culvert will be increased substantially because of the amount of water runoff. What this does, what Andrew's program does for us is now look to that next pot of money, so that we can not apply to the strap, but to this MVP money to go after Molasses Hill as a secondary project. So very key to have this designation, so that we can move forward with the infrastructure projects that are needed. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Great money. I'm one of the people who got that survey, said not interested in the town water, right? But I am interested in you drilling my well at four hundred feet. What would it take to do that? Wouldn't that even be less money than try to put in an entire water system throughout the town, offer people the ability to have a thirty-five-foot well? That's where all my arids come from, and that's why I drive up.
And we did find, I think it was thirteen percent of people had wells less than fifty feet, so you're not the only person living a shallow well.
I believe that. My solution is the deeper wet.
That could easily work for you.
Great. How do I apply for this grant?
So this grant is not available to individuals. This is a grant solely for municipal. There may be other programs out there for, that have research hit for individual homeowners. That, your second question is, wouldn't that be cheaper? That, I think, is something that we would need a civil engineer to do a more quantitative analysis. So what we've done here is basically preliminary, just try to identify what the issues are, and look at ballpark scale of the issues. So if you wanted to price that out as a community, you know, we would need some reinforcements on the technical side to do that detailed analysis.
But what it does is that because of the survey, and it wasn't well-attended, but it decent to give us direction, the reality is that there are a bunch of folks, and we've identified a bunch of folks just like you, and what we'd have to do is to understand who they are, where they are, and to see whether or not the seven or eight thousand dollars for that one well, or bunching together to be able to have a shared service. Again, that was one of the things that you were thinking about. Our focus was to the trail parks, and helping them. But the reality is, there could be other pockets through the southern side of town that have shallow wells, that did experience drought, that maybe there's something that can be done. But again, now we have access to money where we can go study it and figure it out. Right? That's why you're here.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Andrew.
You guys want a minute to close down?
I don't have a minute.
Oh, I agree, excellent.
The next one we're going to do is the scenic road hearing, and Mr. Snyder will explain that.
This was a space saver for whether or not there needed to be a scenic road hearing. And I suggested that we leave it on the agenda for the simple reason to make sure everyone's aware that in fact fisheries and wildlife are looking at two projects up on Long Hill Road, the Salmon River, or Salmon Brook Wildlife Management Area. They're looking to return it to a state of nineteen twenty-three, where it was fields, not woods. So that, one of the things we've learned in the process is that Brookfield is a place where all upland birds that are identified that nest in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts nest in Brookfield. Hopefully I said that correctly. That all the species are represented, that's probably a better way to say that. And so with this, what they want to do is they want to bring that upland bird community up into the Salmon Brook area. And so to do that, they want to put it back as fields as it was. And so the concern was with the scenic road is that if, from the stone wall to the road, is town property and part of the scenic road program, and to cut on that, to cut in that space, you need a hearing to approve it, with the exception of hazard trees. So what the state has obviously done is decided that the healthy trees on the roadside will remain, and only the hazard trees, and there were three that were identified, would come down as a part of this. But I think it's important to understand, not only is there going to be a major project in this wildlife area, that beside it, in a year, over a five-year program, to the west of that area will be a major forest operation to cull out the dead and dying, so that we can really have a better forest for, again, birds and others. So again, the state is looking to spend a bunch of money up there. We welcome it. Thanks.
This is a done deal.
Yeah, it's their money, they're doing it, on their property.
That's good.
And its primary reason is to develop the sanctuary, or get rid of old trees?
And get rid of old trees. And just because of the drifting loss, the amount of dead and dying in this town. I mean, one of the things that you as an advisory board have got to make sure you consider as you do your deliberations, is that we've averaged about ninety trees a year that we're taking down on town property. That, there's two hundred plus on the list, and I, just knowing my property, I know what we're going to be facing as far as taking down dead oaks over the next few years. So it's going to be an expense to the town, as far as town-owned properties, and oak trees. So I'm glad, again, and what Andrew talked about, is the dead and dying oaks up in that area, left to be there, are fire hazards. So it's good that we're getting into it. Anyway, thank you.
It would be nice to see it come back to the sanctuary, because usually... It would be nice to see it come back to the bird sanctuary, because years ago, before the Audubon, what, Elm Hill Farm, every, every spring, the gentleman that owns the bird store down there in Sturbridge, he used to come up, and he used to, they charred a small flea, and we could all, we used to go out in the fields and look for the different birds and bring the binoculars, and he tells us all the different bird calls. And it's not allowed anymore, but it's a nice thing to look for.
Next on the list.
Next on the list is sign the snow guide proposal.
Motion to sign the proposal.
Okay. I'll second that.
And I'll say aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Speaking of hazards.
Next one is to sign the D E P letter of authorization.
Motion to sign.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Cindy's already signed this. The next one here to be, we have another one to be signed, is the better agreement amendment.
And this relates to the Finney Project?
Yeah, the Finney Project.
And what this allows VADA to do for us, for the town, is to in fact file the proper paperwork with EPA and D E P. And just to that, Andrew is looking into several approaches for grant funding to accomplish this, either through mass development or actually C B G, C D P G money that might be available.
Well, that's good. Okay, and the next one is to sign the clock and green contract amendment.
I don't know that.
Okay. This one also, it's, it has something to do with the physical improvements with the water department.
Oh, oh, okay. Motion to sign.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next one is a vacation carryover, and that is from Cindy Thompson. She has eight days that she'd like to carry over.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to do, do we have anything under other?
Can just hear communication.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah. Why don't we do, why don't we move on to those and finish the correspondence?
Yep.
And that, and then we'll get on with the advisory. Now, this, this is one that needed to be signed for the licensing for the application.
Okay. Yep.
Do we have any other?
Andrew, what happened? Oh.
Okay. Then we have here, under correspondence, we have charter communications has some more upcoming changes. Charter, locally known as spectrum, is making customers aware on or around May twenty-fourth that Olympia passed, or whatever, I don't know, will cease transmission of its Hillsong channel located on the basic and the standard tier. And then we have something here also from New Braintree Historical Commission. It says, Dear Board Members, the Historical Commission would like to invite you and your historical commission to attend a gravestone preservation program by Tamara Condi of the Historic Grave Services on Tuesday, the eighteenth of June at seven p.m. at the New Braintree Town Hall, Twenty Memorial Drive. It says, Every town has a cemetery which holds the names of the founding families and history of the community as it has developed. And it says, To get in touch with Deb Morrison at five oh eight eight six seven three three two four, if anybody is interested in attending. All right. Where was, wasn't the one about the utility truck?
That was on the answer. Yeah. Well, I mean, unless you want to say something, but what can we get signed up? I sent it, yeah, email, I figured we'd take care of it that way, but if you have a question, it's, I think it is, yeah, sorry. I don't think you have to be told.
Okay. Back here, when we discussed acquiring the utility truck?
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We should talk about this.
Yeah, we should probably, well, the town recently required a utility truck that has gone through mechanically and insured and registered. It was, where did they get it?
Palmer.
Up in, it came from the town of Palmer, so different board members will be able to use this. And like, the assessors will have keys, and they'll, and he's going to maintain a request for the different uses from different departments. And the one thing that I was concerned about, I feel that the selectmen should have a set of keys to that also.
In the office.
In the office. No, no, in the office, I think, because we have all of them keys in the boxes, and I feel that we should also have a key.
Sure.
So it said the fire department will have a set of keys for emergency or non-emergency situations. And then also, there was something here about how the fire department will handle a maintenance. So he has extra money in his budget that he'd be able to maintain this vehicle.
Just Tamara for the assessors' office.
Yeah, the assessors' office, and if anybody else needs it for any kind of a use. But that was the only thing I was just wanting to say, I just think that.
And he's got a procedure in place, and that's good.
Yeah, there should be a key left in the assessors' office.
I'll ask him to make an extra set of keys in the box.
Yeah, for the box. Okay, our next one is we are going to meet with, joint meeting with the advisory board.
Come on down, guys.
Excellent. Your table back to where it was.
While we get, each other one, the recommendations and recommendations and explanations. Yeah. Okay, we'll resume our meeting. We're going to go over, first thing, do we want to go over the annual budget recommendations, or do we want to go over the articles that have money, and what we're going to use for money for those?
Let's see. I don't know, I just go. I'm inclined to start with the articles, just because they will impact our budget as to how we fund them, and then there are some budget issues that we do want to highlight them.
Okay, so we're going to start, the only one, the only ones here probably are the money articles, and where the money will probably come from.
Yep.
Okay, the first, the first one would be the Article One, that's the deficit for the snow and ice. We probably take that out of stabilization.
Well, you might have seen a summary, maybe I should start there. So we did budget, which you all received, and then I did a summary, which you.
Is that when you went up to, is that the one when you went to see Deb Wagner?
Correct.
Okay.
So I met Deb Wagner, she and I went through the entire budget together, and all the articles, and reviewed revenue and how to fund certain things. Now, if you look at the left side of this document.
I don't have it, but that's fine. I didn't bring it.
You have one.
Oh.
It's in there. It's in the packet.
All right, got it.
If you look at the left side, it says budgeted expenditures, so this is where you have the, you know, the town budget, and then the various articles, and then the very, you know, so, so the first group of articles are snow and ice, cloud, private roads, road construction, those articles, number of the articles and the amount. And then the funding source, and for the purposes of this example, I used stabilization as funding everything. That is not necessarily a advisory recommendation, that is just, you know, as Deb Wagner and I put this together, this is how we did it, okay? Below that you see ATM article warrants, and then other available funding, and that's where the ambulance is, you know, from ComStar, all the money's coming from ComStar. So total appropriations, you add that column up, and you have nine, nine point four million dollars, nine million four hundred forty thousand, a hundred twenty-five dollars. And then you look to the left side, and you see budgeted revenues, and this is where you have the two thousand on levy limit, the total new growth, excuse me, the increase of two or five percent on the levy limit, plus new growth, that's a five-year average, a calculation of the correct calculation of the levy ceiling, and then the levy limit, two thousand twenty plus debt exclusion, which is police station minus the Tantascas Regional School District reimbursement. And so that was added. So your total maximum amount of levy limit is five million seven hundred forty thousand two hundred point nine four dollars, you know, the cherry sheet revenue at two point five, local estimate receipts at nine hundred fifty-two thousand, that's a five-year average. The funding for the ambulance is going to come from ComStar, and then, and then, of course, your revenue sources for your, for all the articles, for this example, would be stabilization. So your total revenues is nine, nine, nine million eight hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred fifty dollars amount to be raised, we need, we need nine point four million. The four, four million dollars there, four million seven six thousand five hundred, two hundred fifty-six dollars is the, is the amounts coming from stabilization, ComStar, local estimate receipts, and then cherry sheet revenue, that's, that's where that number comes from. And so the difference between the total revenues and the receipts from other sources is five, five million three hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. That's, that's the amount that needs to be raised through taxation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's a quick estimated tax rate right there, and as you can see, the bottom lines here, stabilization account, we're starting with six hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars, I received that from town treasurer. And, and if we were to file all the articles as identified above that, it would leave us with five hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars. And so that's, that's a snapshot of what, what we've got. As we make decisions as to how to fund the articles, of course, that, that taxation line can change. If we're, if we're choosing to raise it appropriate, you know, for instance, you know, solve it upon, any of the above, okay, that would move into a different column.
Yes, I understand.
So with that being said, then, you know, we're ready to talk about how to fund the articles. Any questions as far as this document goes?
That was quite good.
It's quite, quite good. The only thing, though, I think, the two thousand dollars for the streetlights, that's on by a petition, so we don't even know if that is even going to pass.
Agreed.
That one.
This is a snapshot of what.
Snapshot, oh, I understand. It's, it's put together very well. I appreciate you going up and seeing Deb Wagner and doing this.
It was one of the most beneficial things I've done so far, so.
I, I.
She was excellent, by the way.
Personally, I, the way I feel, we should just take these, instead of doing appropriations, we should just take these few articles right here out of stabilization, and hopefully in the fall, we have free cash, we can put the money back into stabilization.
As we did last year.
Yeah, as we did last year.
Unless there's some burning article that needs to come in a different direction.
I don't see anything that we.
I'm asking Steve.
I, I, I won't, we have, as a committee, have gone through the articles and, I believe all spending articles we support, okay? We have questions on streetlights and things like that, but, and then perhaps the library was, so I think it's worth talking about a couple of these articles, you know, amongst us at this point. So as far as snow and ice advisory, thirty-six thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars, we're typically taking that from free cash. We were, I believe we, we were in, 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 saying it would be, we would recommend that be taken out of stabilization. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we were all together on that one, and then.
We're, we're together on that all.
Yeah.
So snow and ice was, was a stabilization, private roads was stabilization, road construction and reconstruction. And I believe we had agreed to do that out of, well, let's just, let's just discuss this. Was there, do we agree to take that out of stabilization? We have to know, and is there a motion here?
Did we approve that last week?
I think we approved, and I'm just, I'm just cracking my brains today. So I think this was two weeks ago.
These are all approved, it's just a matter of.
These were all approved two weeks, yeah.
How we're going to.
I remember we approved the motions, if they, if the, if the, if the warrant, if the warrant articles didn't specify how we paid, I don't think we specified anything in our approval.
That's how I think we left it, is that we wanted to understand what the stabilization amount was, so we made sure we had headroom. The answer is we have headroom, so as we did last year, just do it, and then we can clean it up in the fall.
Yeah. Yeah. If anyone remembers differently, I think you're absolutely right, we didn't know how to fund it, we just agreed to them.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Very well, are, are we ready to, you know, make a motion then to just fund these? Is this what you're looking to do at this point?
Yes.
Okay. As a committee, I'm, do I hear a motion to fund all the spending articles, Articles Number One, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen, totaling one hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, assuming there's no changes, through stabilization? Do I hear a motion?
Excuse me, Steve, what did you say the bottom number was?
I have it as one hundred nineteen thousand.
Okay, eight fifty-nine, okay. I thought I heard something different. Okay, that's okay. Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So do we want to?
Any else?
I don't think we, if you want to, I, I don't see why.
We approved it.
We, we approved it anyway.
Yeah, we approved it anyway.
Yeah, it was just that one question of making sure we had headroom, we have headroom.
And we have the headroom.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's your, there's a, there's an accurate snapshot there, and I've, you know, I've got this formula ready to go. If anything moves to taxation, we're going to.
Okay.
Do you have?
Excellent.
Okay. All right.
So from the articles thing, the only thing that's left is Sharon's, right?
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have the, the final one.
Director, well, we have, we have the, the final ones from Town Council, if you want to look at over. I did plug them in here. We're waiting for the recommendations by the advisory board for that because.
That's what you emailed to us sometime this afternoon, correct? It's, it's the most recent email we have regarding the article.
Yes. Well, I, I believe I emailed it as soon as it came in, I think it was yesterday. But the most recent copy of this warrant, I emailed to you again this afternoon because there was just a one-word change in Article One. But the, the two planning board articles are the same.
Good, so the lawyers are all set with everything?
Yes, just waiting for, yeah. Sharon sent it after me, I sent it to them.
So we're good to go, right? Sharon, you're good to go? Sharon's good to go?
Yeah.
Motion to support the planning board's recommendation.
You've already voted to support.
If we've got it, we're done.
Yeah, we're done.
Alright.
Yeah.
We have not seen it as, this is the first we've seen it as a group, okay? We have our committee meeting Thursday night, okay? And so I, I, I know I haven't read the whole thing. Has any, has, has everyone had a chance to read the articles since twenty and twenty-one?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Now it's twenty-six and twenty-seven, I think.
Yeah, twenty-six.
I read most of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
I was waiting for the attorneys, but the attorneys didn't follow the regulations.
Right, I, I read the first drafts. I didn't read the finals.
Michelle didn't have it.
I don't know, I, it's so long that I didn't get a chance to check all the changes. Did you notice, Sharon, if there were any changes in this last draft?
Just come up and answer questions in general, Rachel.
Okay.
Yeah, Dick had a question, sure thing, just a little.
Questions in general or specific? I will say that Town Council's issues with this, there were maybe two or three for each of the two warrant articles. And they mainly concerned either inherent contradictions between the chart, the use regulation chart, and some of the wording. And we clarified that. And, or recommended changes in wording that came about according to Town Council because the state laws have changed. For example, there's a, a group that's designated in the first draft that no longer exists. So the Town Council recommended that we change the wording to reflect the new group that's in charge. The name's escaped at the moment. So that the warrant article would be correct with regard to the current status of how marijuana is regulated. They were. That's correct. The Cannabis Control Commission. The solar one, I think there were two recommendations, and they had to do with the beginning of the warrant article. The introduction to it. And just in clarification language, it did not change. I, I should point out, neither of these changed the inherent purpose of these warrant articles. They were either housekeeping, one type O, or the changes I just described. There is a map that goes with this. I did send, he tells me I did send it to him, it was very, very easy with this. And, but I didn't write any. But I can send it to anyone who would like a copy, electronic copy. And the one thing I will. The one thing I will point out is that this map is identical in every way to the medical marijuana overlay district map. We have not changed the boundaries of that map at all. We are re-designating it for both medical and adult use marijuana. So the areas covered in this overlay district are identical. The one change that is different is that if you were at the last town meeting where the medical marijuana bylaw was enacted, and I believe it was twenty-twelve, I think. There was an amendment from the floor that changed the buffers on which, I believe it's found on page three. It shows a document on Lewis Field and the elementary school. The buffer zone that was originally put before the town was five hundred feet, linear feet from any establishment that had to do with children, schools, churches, Lewis Field, et cetera. This was a recommended linear buffer zone recommended by the state at the time for medical marijuana facilities. There was a vote from the floor to amend the medical marijuana bylaw to increase that distance to twenty-five hundred square, uh, twenty-five hundred feet rather than this five hundred feet. In other words, a five-fold increase in the buffer zone. And the concern mentioned was the safety of children. I pointed out at the time that increasing this buffer zone to effectively, would amount to a half a mile, would effectively eliminate one of the two sections of the buffer zone and reduce the third to a fraction of the area that was put forward in the bylaw. However, the town did vote to enact this enlarged buffer zone.
I remember that.
I did not expect it to pass muster with the Attorney General because of the severe intrusion into the original overlay district. But apparently it did pass muster. I should point out that Town Council informed me that the Attorney General will probably look very carefully, more carefully, at adult use marijuana overlay districts. So if a similar type of amendment, increasing the buffer zone, is put forward and enacted by the town, there is at least a fifty-fifty chance that the Attorney General will monitor it. Because it would happen that effect of severely, severely restricting the overlay district to a point where it is meaningless. But we'll see what happens on the town floor. Right now it's five hundred square, five hundred feet. And that is a distance, again, recommended by the state. And we included it, and the argument we're going to give to the town floor is that we included it to ward off any concerns about the effect of marijuana establishments in groups and establishments that, you know, gave to children. It's pretty straightforward. So.
So the twenty-five hundred layer feet that is currently on books would be changed or?
Yes, and the change is outlined in the text of the bylaw.
Yep.
But the boundaries.
What does all this mean, this? I mean, what, what, where, where can anything happen?
Okay, Bobby, can I see your copy? Okay. Page one, this first map, shows the tax maps from the assessor's office, as they currently exist. Mine is the latest. If you look in the bottom, there's a legend in color showing the different districts in the town. District B is the village district. District BB is business B. And as you can see, there are only really two of those in, in this map. Just the, the light tan is district business A. And district FP, the kind of the second degree color, is the flood plain. Rural residential is white. The overlay district is found on the second map. And that is a portion that is crosshatched in red. And it is in two sections. In driving this overlay district originally for the medical marijuana bylaw, we wanted to avoid a density of population that would not only make it impractical, but probably would not pass town muster. But these two sections of the overlay district are, are located on main roads, Route Nine and South Maple Street. There are districts that are not as densely populated, but yet are close enough to town to attract possible businesses that may be interested in either building or buying the property or building it within those districts or using existing buildings. And there are a few there. The third, and the third map here, the one that's labeled MOB in two sections, is the westernmost section of the overlay district. On either side of Route Nine, showing the property lines of the various properties that are involved. They're primarily in business A. And are bordered by village and, I believe, yes, flood plain. This map also shows the effect of the buffer zone relative to Lewis Field and the elementary school down here. The buffer zone does, does intrude slightly on the northernmost overlay district, just on one corner. And a slightly larger section on the southernmost part of that, westernmost overlay district. If you go to the next page, it shows the easternmost, the third section of that overlay district on South Maple. And as you can see, it almost entirely falls within one or two properties. And those properties are as own business A and business B. Does that make things clearer?
Next to the question, on the first one, I mentioned the two. Where is a couple of the plans in this place, like?
No, that, that section is, it's west of, I believe it's west of.
It's off the right of the map.
From here.
Mill on that.
Yeah, because they'd be more in the buffer zone, not because of the school.
Right.
Cumberland would prob. Cumberland would probably be more in the buffer zone just because it's by the school.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
Company's is practically right next to the school, and we avoided that area altogether.
And buffer zone, the, this, this one, right over here?
Yes.
What's, um, is this where like that solar field is? Where is this? Victory Road and all.
Okay, Victory Road is the road leading through the solar field that is opposite Plant Box.
Yep.
At the time this map was drawn up, there was no solar field there.
Right.
If the property owners wanted to take out the solar field and put in a marijuana business, they would still be able to do it if this map passed again. Or if they wanted to reserve a corner of the property, or if the property owners on either side wanted to do this, they would be, they would be able to do it.
Who owns all this now? Is this the solar field owns all that?
Well, I, the property lines of this map are drawn from a previous subdivision map that was drawn up some time ago, which has not yet been updated on the tax maps. Those property lines have been eliminated. The property is now one big, one big piece, I believe, on either side of Victory Road. So those individual small lots don't exist anymore.
Right.
But this was the latest map we had to work with, so we went with those.
That's, that's fine. But in other words, right now it's one, one piece of property, and it's owned by the people who own the solar farm.
Yes. There are, with the exception of the easternmost property, the, the street designations on this map are closed in circles near the, the main streets. So in other words, there, for example, there's a, a large piece of property that on the easternmost side here, that does not belong to the owners of the solar farm. It is the property next door. And I believe, I can't really read this because the, I don't have my good glasses on, but.
Which section, Sharon, you're talking?
On this section of the map.
Down here on the bottom?
Yes. No, the, the overlay district is within the red line.
That's the overlay.
It's laid over the current.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because that's South Maple. And.
Sharon?
Yes.
I'm looking at this map, the western overlay district. It looks to me like, I don't see a buffer zone around, drawn here around Brookfield Elementary. Is it not shown simply because the buffer zone around Brookfield Elementary does not impact the overlay district on the western side of town?
Um, I, if I get the gist of your question, the, the elementary schools, this map we're extending, the elementary school would be over there. So it's not even close to.
Okay, so it's like, but there's no buffer zone drawn around it simply because there's no overlay district near it to approach on the buffer zone? So why draw it if it's really, if no one's going to be worried about that line? Because you can't build just outside the buffer zone anyway.
That's correct. The reason we included this buffer zone is because it's close to these overlay districts and it doesn't impact it.
Yes, a technical question.
Sure.
For lots that have the buffer zone boundary pass through them, are they, are they considered to be outside the buffer zone and therefore eligible for a marijuana business? Or if the buffer zone passes through the lot, is the requirement such that then they are now not eligible because the buffer zone passes, the buffer zone boundary passes through their home?
I get the gist of your question, and I'll repeat it back to you in, in, in other language. You're asking if, if a buffer zone is on a property, it doesn't apply to the whole property, is what you're saying, right?
That's another way to ask the question, yes.
Right, okay. The answer is no. The buffer zone is the buffer zone. If somebody, for example, who owned this piece of property, assuming that we're one piece, wanted to build a marijuana business, they could, as long as it's not outside of the primary.
As long as they cite all of the relevant operations outside of the zone.
Yes.
They can do it on their property, they just can't do it on the property that is inside the buffer zone.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's helpful to understand. And that's why it's gone this way.
If I'm over here, wherever that is, outside of the buffer zones or anything else, and I want to do a marijuana business, can I?
The answer is no.
Because?
It would be restricted to the overlay district only.
It's well beyond any school or anything else?
Yes. Oh, you mean the, the rest of town?
The rest of town.
Right.
My house.
My house too.
Okay. And the answer is no, because it's not in the overlay district.
That's correct.
I, I believe the intent was to have the overlay, since these are commercial and, I guess, could be technically considered like industrial uses, the intent was to keep the overlay district in compatible zoning areas like business A.
That's exactly right.
And these businesses, these, since these are businesses, they're not compatible with a residential zoning designation like where you live.
That's exactly right.
What about farming?
Marijuana farming is not considered an agricultural use. So it does not fall under agricultural allowances. And that's a state decision, not ours. If you, if you look at the bylaw, it requires any growing operation be done entirely indoors.
It didn't.
You would have, you would have to put a building up. If you know about the Charlton proposal, Valley Green Grove, and they're proposing building massive, massive structures to entirely contain the farm with ventilation and the accompanying air conditioning noise with, you know, the traffic that's involved and so forth. It's not as simple as just planting a property, watching it grow. It has to, the, the alarm system and so forth. In other words, it has to happen indoors, which means huge buildings depending on the scale of the operation.
My understanding is the need for buildings is a, is a, of security requirements on the product that they're growing there.
That is correct.
It's much harder to defend open fields.
That's right. I'm unfortunate. I'm not in charge, but I have to answer it.
That's okay, Derek.
So could you state your name, just so I, I have to get it earlier, please.
Richard Lowery.
Richard Lowery, yes.
So in the proposed overlay district that's uptown here, does that mean that it's not going to be permitted anywhere else?
That is correct. That is the intent of the bylaw, as it's currently written.
As it's currently written, but this is just a proposal, correct?
This will go before the town for a vote. And as with the map, the last time we did the medical marijuana vote, any amendment can be proposed from the floor. However, it's, like I said, the state has very strict requirements for somebody wanting to grow marijuana. And given the, those requirements and the uproar that has resulted in other towns that want to establish these large industrial-type farms, it was the planning board's opinion that, given Brookfield's scale, given the, the state-owned land, given the attempt at open space planning that we're doing, given the recreational areas, we felt that allowing farms on a blanket basis would severely impact some of the other uses that the town is not only currently using, but is, is basically well-known for. So we tried to balance, as with everything planning board does, the. the, the interests of private property owners with the general well-being and land use, the good of land use for the town. And that was where we were coming from with this.
So the only way to have that changed is to go with the two of the town meeting and see if they can amend it?
At this point, I believe so, yes. And there would be a raft of questions that would have to be answered if that was the case, because when you're talking about maps and land use, it's not enough just to simply say rural residential, because you've got issues with flood plain, you've got issues with, um, you would have to, you would have to have hearings, I believe, if you were going to change this to that extent. You could not change the essential nature of the bylaw. You could propose amendments, but if they radically or even substantially change the nature of the proposed bylaw, they would not be allowed from the floor. The one that expanded the buffer zone is different because it did not change the nature of the medical marijuana bylaw. It simply expanded the buffer zone and left everything else the way it was, which is why that amendment was allowed. As far as what amendments are allowed, town council will be available to give their opinion on whether any, any amendments from the floor would involve a substantial change in the bylaw. And again, the reason for this is because any zoning bylaw changes have to be subject to a public hearing if they involve a substantial change. I hope that's not too confusing.
Well, it's, it's not that confusing. I mean, I'm aware of all the laws, the security and everything you have to do to one of these facilities. And it's not to increase anything that's going on now and to contain it inside my space that I'm already using to grow flowers.
I understand that, but again, we had to balance the common good of the town with the interests of private property owners. And we decided that since this map had already been approved by the town, albeit with the increase of the buffer zone debt, the path of least resistance would be to go with the same map. And that's where we were coming from with this. We did have a public hearing on the 20th. Fortunately, nobody came. We also had two previous listening sessions where people could give input, such as the input you're giving. Nobody came to those. And the reason that we had three meetings rather than just the state-required one was because we wanted to hear from people like you about how you should write these bylaws. Without that type of input, we had to go with our best guess as to what would be, or our best, um, the word, we know the word to look for, our, our best opinion of what was good for the town. Based on previous, the previous bylaw, based on what we knew about state lines, um, based on what we knew about privacy in other towns, based on ongoing projects in the town like open space, uh, and recreational facilities, and, um, then people wanting to put trails in and work that's being done in issues of wildlife. You know, you're dealing with a patchwork quilt, even in the best circumstances of uses, that all have to be balanced against each other. If we heard from private property owners such as yourself, we might have been able to come up with something that would satisfy the people who gave that concern. But we did not hear from anybody. So we had to go with, you know, what we knew.
Well, we weren't aware, I mean, I'm sure it was posted somewhere, but we weren't aware of any meetings about it.
They were, well, I don't know if you have Facebook. We did put them on Facebook and they were posted according to all of, all of the legal requirements that the state allows. And whenever I had the opportunity, I would chalk it up. But it's very difficult for people to come to meetings here unless they have something personal at stake. And, uh, you know, I regret that, but we did make the effort.
And Sharon?
Yes.
I mean, if the, on these, just for scenario, if we're doing a scenario, if this is approved on the floor, there is still a process for people to say, we would like to amend the zoning bylaws. We think that there, that this use marijuana-related would be appropriate on this type of property. And the law can be amended in the future, this is not being set in, this is being set, but it is, there is a process to amend it based on new information coming, more different interests being presented.
Zoning bylaws are always subject to amendment.
But I mean, but I mean modification in the future time.
That's correct.
Yes, yes, I mean, obviously, this is subject to amendment on the floor as long as it's not, as long as the scope is narrow enough. But I'm saying that if this is approved, it, it sounds like there's some interest in the town for a, I'm going to guess, growing operation on your part. And so, and, and I know, I know where you're located, I live near you. So it's like, so it's like, and your property is not in that. But my point is that, that that could be changed based on uh, the, the normal process of making changes to the zoning laws. I know that, um, last year, we had the, the moratorium, Sharon's opinion, what I, Sharon. I concerned, what's that, without the zoning laws, it's like people who come in and just apply. And so, her concern is that the town should have a zoning, zoning rules in effect in order to control what people can do. And it sounds like that you're on the outside looking in on that rule. But that doesn't mean that can't be changed. It's like, because I would be, I would be concerned, I mean, with you near me, it's like I would be concerned with the impact of that type of operation on that part of town. And I would, and so, and I think that was why the planning board made their decision to say any growing operations have to be in the overlay district, which is already business-related, if I'm correct, Sharon?
Yes, that's, that's the thinking that was, that was being proposed.
But my thought is, is that if, based on what you present, saying this is, this is what it would be like, this is traffic, this is what structure you have on site, these are the impacts to, to all this, it's like you could convince the, the government and the town to say, yeah, that is, that's, that's a reasonable use of the property. It's not going to impact the neighbors. The neighbors will have the opportunity to, uh, to talk about it and weigh in. And you could, and you would have a chance then, right?
There would be procedures that would have to be followed. Planning board would have to be involved, because unfortunately, in this town, we do not give out what are called use variances.
Okay, um.
Once a bylaw.
Thank you, I was, I was not trying to represent your expertise.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just adding as, as a additional information, because there was an attempt, albeit a minor one, to change a bylaw to allow use, if not, that was prohibited in a certain district. And the ZBA erroneously gave them what's called a use variance, meaning that the land use, the land itself, the boundaries were not changed, but the, the allowed use was. And it was ruled invalid, because use variances are not allowed in this town. So in other words, if you wanted to go before the ZBA and say, yes, the bylaw forbids this use in our property, we would, we would like a variance for that use, you would not be able to do it. But your option would be, if you and your neighbors decided you would like to do this, you could come before planning board with a proposal, we would be willing to study it. We would be willing to, again, have hearings and information sessions. And if the select, with the assistance of the select board, of course, and the advisory committee, this would, as Tom said, be subject to amendment. In the same way that we're proposing this, in other words, there would be an amended bylaw put before the town for a vote. And that, that could change the district, it could make it bigger, it could make it a different location. That can't happen now, but that is certainly an option for the future.
You know, I, I propose that what we want to do would be less of an impact than what it is now. There's thousands of cars that go down there every day to our place. If we did such a facility as that, there would be no cars.
Well, that would certainly be something that would be taken into consideration. However, you are located next to a church. And churches are within the buffer zone, have a buffer zone around them. And as you pointed out earlier, when we had our reformal talk before this meeting, if, even if it wasn't allowed use in your area, that would, that portion of it would impact your business were you to apply for it at your current property. So these things have to be considered and worked into whatever proposal is, is, uh, is put before the town, either now or in the future.
Well, just for an instance, I'm a half a mile from the school. But because my property borders the school, that means it's no.
The way this bylaw is currently written, that is correct. And that is a recommendation the state has put forward for towns. The, the state has recommended that a buffer zone be included on any use that involves gatherings or use by children. And so that's why we, we follow the state recommendations and that's why we put it into the bylaw.
But to understand, that would, that buffer zone would affect the 500 feet from his property line of the school. 500 feet in his property, anything more than 500 feet would not be excluded by proximity to the school.
That's correct.
Proximity to the church could be an issue, because the church is on the side, the school's in the back. But, but it's like, but, and I don't, I don't remember exactly how your plot lays out, how close the church is and all that.
Well, again, it goes to, to property lines, if it went to the church, it would be beyond 500 feet.
Um, you know, the problem with this discussion is that it, it's very specific to your property. And it's, I've already said that we cannot substantially change this.
Right, go ahead.
Right, right, I understand that. And, but I want to make it clear that, you know, the door is open for any subsequent changes to this bylaw, because any bylaw, any zoning bylaw can be changed in time. That's, you know, there's a process involved and, uh,
Do you have a question?
And planning board would be more than happy to work with you if you decided you want to do that, you know, once we were over this town meeting deadline.
Sharon, Sharon, I think, let, let's cut to the chase.
Yes.
If we fail to vote this, someone walks into town and says, I'm going to do this, we have no standing.
We have no regulation.
So, so, so the recommendation would be that we vote this so that we have some regulation and then we then look to amend over time. Do I get this?
Yes, exactly.
So, so the, the right thing to do is to have the law on the books, the, the zoning bylaws on the books, and then move forward after that with the specific recommendations or interest of a, a business that wants to be in town.
I'm going to throw out one more thing. We cannot prohibit these establishments, because when the, when the plebiscite, when the stake my vote took place, Brookfield voted for legalizing marijuana. If the town votes for legalizing marijuana, they cannot prohibit marijuana establishments. So the only request was to put some regulation in place so that we'd have some control. And so that anybody coming into town as for the solar one would know what the playing field was, so that they would know what the rules were that the town allowed. And we would not have to go through the same painstaking process of going to town council and custom writing a permit for every single person.
Thanks.
Thank you, okay. We're all set.
Advisory Board, your recommendation?
Recommendation on that.
And thus?
Yes?
Oh, that, I just wanted to say, we've had a lot of discussion about the marijuana bylaw, were there any questions on the solar bylaw?
Any questions on solar? I don't know.
And Sharon, while they're deliberating, if there's a decision that can't be made tonight, does Thursday hurt you?
I'm not sure you get that hurt us.
Unprepared, we'd have to bring it up at town meeting, are we publishing something tonight?
Well, what, the only, the only thing it's going to affect, because when we post, we, Mike is posting tomorrow, but it doesn't have the recommendations in the posting. The only thing it'll affect is the advisory board and their publication of their warrant.
Okay.
Because that includes it.
I've got that under control. Uh, you can wait till Thursday to, I, I'd just like to ask the committee, you know, you know, you know, we can either approve this now or, or not. Okay, we can vote to either support or no.
And if I may, we do have a planning board meeting organized. Any or all of you are welcome to attend. And we do have this on the agenda, just like the other board members up to date. So if there are any questions that you would have, that you'd like to address the entire planning board, we'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion?
I move that the advisory board recommended support for the, uh, the building amendments regarding photovoltaic systems and medical marijuana zoning.
Um, it's, uh, it's adult use and medical, just.
Uh, oh, thank you, for, for, for adult and medical marijuana use.
One second. On the table.
Aye.
Any gets, no? Got it.
Thank you, everybody.
Moving on.
Moving on.
Sharon?
Thank you, Sharon.
So those were the only two things that you had to give. So those are the only two articles that you had to give recommendations on?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we want to move on to the operating budget?
Yep.
Okay.
Is he taking my mitts here?
Another question. Did the lawsuit from Mitchell Hill Road get stalled against the town by, uh, insurance company?
What lawsuit? What lawsuit was?
When she fell off.
It was slipped and fall, yes, that was taken care of by our insurance company.
Yes, oh, that's the one, okay.
Yes.
That was taken care of last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that was last year. At first, when you said Mitchell Hill Road, I didn't. I thought there was something going on up on Mitchell Hill. Not yet, okay.
Mike want something?
Mike, did you want anything? He's just sitting in.
As far as our budget goes, um, as you can see, most, most everything, there's a lot of that going with this. Assessor, you know, we've added grant rider to the general government uh, budget, and I was following your instructions at that point. Assessors had some increases.
I have a question here on the assessors. You have assessor certification stipend. That, um, that is something that has to be taken up at a town meeting, because there's a certain chapter in the mass general law that has to be adopted by town meeting in order for him to have a certification stipend. And I had talked to the town clerk and he said, to his knowledge, there wasn't any article passed. So he would have to have, take that up probably in the fall. Because I had done one in the early 2000s when I was certified as town clerk. And it was the town clerk and the collector and the, and the treasurer. And the assessor was a whole separate one.
But we should leave it in for budget. I mean.
So, so I hear two.
But I just don't want him to, but he's got an, um, should know that he just can't go collecting this now. He's got to wait until he brings it up at a town meeting in the fall.
Okay, is this not something that can be brought up at this town meeting?
No, because the warrant's closed. Everything is closed.
So who, who's going to tell Al?
Well, I can go in, I can tell him.
Yeah, okay.
I'll tell him.
All right, great.
That's, that's.
Hmm? You?
No.
He won't be in?
He won't be in, it's always.
But he will be here tomorrow.
There's these, uh, negotiations.
Oh, okay, I'll catch him tomorrow.
Um, okay, um, that, that's fine, I, I see no reason not to fund that line. I doubt the town will vote against not getting.
Oh, yeah, but he just has to have the understanding, he can't collect it until it's passed town meeting.
Very well, okay. Just rolling through it, treasurer, um, yeah, I, I think there's going to be some discussion about what's the treasurer's salary, seeing that we, and same with, I should not just skip right over this, um, town accountant's salary, um, as far as, who, you know, what are we paying current town, you know, town accountant? Um, there's just a lot of money going around here for people and, um, and yet everyone's resigned. So what are we actually paying people who are doing the job currently and things like that? I think we need to be able to handle that.
Well, it came out, well, the town, right now, what we're doing to get everything all straightened out, we're paying right up until FY, the end of FY '20, we're paying $50,000 to the accounting firm.
Okay, that's a great one. Where is that here?
No, because it was done out FY, we're doing it out of FY '19.
So.
So what we have would be, if, under accountant, what we'll end up doing is that it won't be paid via these lines, but the monies are funded by these lines.
Yes.
So we're not overspending what we paid, paid for personnel. We're, we have. We have an agency that's under contract to us that we're paying based on the monies that are in this account, or these accounts.
Yes, these accounts.
We all understood that. I think it's just a question, and someone's gonna raise the question, and someone, one would select one to be ready to respond to that, and be able to put it together in three sentences.
Well, well, Mr. Karchef is going to be here also himself. He's here, and the girl is doing our accounting, they're both, they both will be at town meeting.
They will be at town meeting.
Yes.
Still, okay.
And he, he will be making a statement.
And they'll be able to explain the details of, of affecting the '19 budget, and then this, this '20 budget line, this $59,553 is not going to move, particularly the salary, and let's just say salary line is not going to move.
So is the intention that we are contracting with the accounting firm for all of this year '20, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, yeah, we are. And then, and if we're satisfied with him, then we could contract with him, it would be a lesser fee.
Yes, because the, uh, the $50,000 you mentioned included some of this year '19 along with some residual work that's, that's needed to be done.
And so if we're, yeah, like, if we're happy with him in FY '21, uh, it'll be considered, it'll be about $40,000 a year, I think.
And per my.
Would it, would it not make sense to amend the budget to change, change the line and count salary to?
No, I wouldn't. I would leave it where it is. I, I wouldn't touch it.
Okay.
Let's see where we're going.
Because we, because we have to see, you know, where all this goes.
Gotta watch it closely.
Yeah.
Treasurer salary, and I, I would be prepared for any question, and I think the town accountant's ready to do that, that'd be great as well, for the numbers.
Well, I don't know if he's gonna talk about hers, but I mean, that, right now, we have the interim.
So, and what are we paying that person, and, and we've also funded a additional $4,000 for a consultant, and so, you know, between them, there's a 57, almost $58,000 line here, and, and, um, how much are we paying our interim, and?
Well, she's being paid, right now, she's being paid 26 an hour, and it is coming out of the FY '19 salary. And if you took, probably took a 2% and added 2.5 onto that, it would come up more. And then the consultant here that came up, she, the reason that she had upped it, because they're, she's helping her fix, she's a retired treasurer collector from Paxton, and, um, they're fixing a lot of problems that have been going on in the office the last few years. This is what they're doing, and she's helping her along, and she's doing a good job, Bonnie's learning a lot, and she's doing a good job.
What, how many hours do, do, do our town, um, employees work? It's Monday through Thursday, correct?
Mm-hmm, and then Lanny, Lanny's even been coming in on, on Fridays.
How many hours?
Hours?
Do we pay her to work?
I don't know how many hours.
We don't know how many hours.
Are they due?
I don't know. It, is it based on Linda? Do you know?
It's in four days.
She's in the four days, and then a lot of times, she's in here on, uh, Fridays also, because there's just so much to catch up on in that office.
Well, I, I, I don't, I, I'm just, let's say it's a 40-hour week.
Well, I don't think, I don't think she's working a 40-hour work. She's in here by 8:30, isn't she usually?
Typically, yes.
Typically, she's here at 8:30, and then how long is she?
Sometimes she stays till four, sometimes, I mean, she puts in a, a good day.
She puts in a good day.
So, so, so at 32 hours per week, at $26 per hour.
She's working about 35 hours.
Okay, so there's, there's $43,264. So in other words, for an interim, less than fully qualified treasurer, we're using almost 100% of our budget for a treasurer that was, uh, when we hired that person.
When we hired the.
Supposed to be fully qualified and capable of doing it by themselves, no? See where I'm going here? You know, it's.
Yeah, she's not with us anymore.
Yes, the other treasurer's not with us anymore.
Right, right.
And we had just given her, we'd just given her a raise, um, $30 an hour we were gonna pay her.
Yeah, she was making 30.
She was making 30 an hour. So I'm sure that that, that is what this is based on.
Didn't you guys have a meeting with her?
No.
Is that, I mean, we should have, these, these things should have been taken up at a session.
Well, well.
I mean, this is, this is a little late in the game.
Yeah.
Well, well.
I know that she.
That's not, that's not necessarily the case, you know, we, we requested a meeting, she wasn't able to make it, and then.
Were we informed?
No. Okay, uh, but then, but then, uh, our, our town accountant resigned, okay? And then, and then.
Surprise, surprise, yeah.
Well, right, things happen at the same time. So in other words, that became less of an issue, okay?
Yes, but the treasurer went out, she went on, out on a sick leave, and that was back in December.
Okay, um, I'm not here, I'm not here to say, um, uh, we, we would take full responsibility for my meeting face-to-face with the treasurer, okay? We're spending $58,000 for, for getting a job done that was, you know, at $47,000, and with a person who is, and we're moving forward with a person who is not fully qualified to do that position. So maybe the question for, for this meeting is, what is our plan to advertise, um, and, and look for a qualified replacement, fully qualified replacement for town, town treasurer?
Well, we had talked about leaving her in place, you can correct me.
Through the fall.
Through the fall, until, you know, a lot of these problems are solved, because you wouldn't want to go hiring, right, as of now, you wouldn't want to go hiring a new treasurer and plomp them right in the middle of all of this that's going on now, because she's very, because she's very aware of all the problems right now that we're having.
I guess the other question is, do we think that a fully qualified treasurer, whatever market we pay, or is this the right number to budget, or?
Yeah, I would, I would budget that.
I'd say, I would say it's very close.
Yes, I would say it's very close.
With the consultant.
Yeah, with the consultant.
Again, I, I would hope that with the use of the consultant to get the pass taken care of, get through an audit, and see where we are, to make decisions at that time as to whether or not we change horses. Right now, with, with a person and a half, basically, we're getting it done.
Yeah.
Do we like it? We don't.
No.
But the plan is to get to a point, call it the fall, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then open up a search to find a treasurer that can.
And one of the things that Ms. Coughlin has said in, in, in open meeting is that we just don't want to appoint someone. We want to have the process, go through the process, to see what resources are available to this town.
Okay, here, well, exactly.
Yeah. That's what we're gonna.
And we, we made ourselves, and specifically, uh, Jeff Clark, a tailor, uh, available for such a process. He's got a lot of experience with finding people, researching, hiring, that sort of thing, evaluating.
But the thing is, though, I mean, for a treasurer, though, Jeff, we need somebody who has municipal experience. You just can't put somebody in that doesn't have municipal experience.
No, I, I, I'm not debating that. I'm just saying, is it, we're sort of looking along as far as, I'm, this is my personal opinion, and that person had already, I guess we went through the same process with her previously, and then she resigned through whatever, reclaimed, you know, workplace, hazardous workplace or whatever, and now she's back doing the same, you know, job that she was doing before. So, I mean, that, we need to have at least a full field of candidates, I think, to, to.
Yeah, we understand that.
And that's the plan.
It is the plan.
Yeah, that is the plan. That's what we plan on doing.
Thank you. Um, there.
So the two and a half is not in this.
So the two and a half isn't in this.
Am I correct?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is, okay.
The two and a half is in there.
Okay.
Okay.
All the lines presented tonight are subject to protocol.
Okay, okay, I had a question.
Contract control is in.
I had a question here on the highway superintendent wages. We started him at 60,000, and you have him as 58,264. That's line item 124.
That's probably because I don't recall hearing an update of the salary of the new highway superintendent. I think that number came over from the budget that Herb submitted when he was still in the position.
Yeah, okay, so that's.
So we may need to, we need to, we need to change that.
Yes, now, uh, here, um.
What's the number?
Sixty.
Sixty, we started him at. Okay, and now, I know, but when we do a review, I wonder if we should put some more in it?
Oof.
Yeah.
So we owe you, uh, some information by Thursday.
Yeah, we owe some more information by Thursday, and, because we're gonna give him a 90-day review, and if we decide to pay him a little bit more, we have to have enough money in the, in the salary to do it.
And if you don't decide to pay him more, is he gone?
No, 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 that's not it.
Well, it.
Well, you know, I guess it's lost in his court, right?
Right, but again, I think we should, we should anticipate that at some point during the year, if it's a 90 days or six months, there should be some.
There will be.
Where the agreement is.
Yeah, we need some.
And Beth's not here this evening, and Beth negotiated the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, so whatever the number is.
And I have it in a text, so I can send, I have it in a text, what the agreement was, so I can, and, and actually, I wrote a letter for him to, to agree to, so I have it in writing.
You can probably.
I'll send it, I will send it tomorrow.
Okay. And now, another question I have here, on the highway operator wages, does this include a third person? Because I know you had mentioned, when we had.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't. It, it includes just the two.
Correct.
Okay, because I know that Herb had wanted a third person on.
Correct, that was.
Okay.
Never.
The new highway person next year would come in and make whatever recommendation needs.
Okay, all right. Are there any other things I've been looking at over? Clarence, do you see anything?
The, so legal.
Next to.
Okay, you have that page for that email, right?
Legal services.
What line item is that?
It's under hours.
I'm checking on the first page.
It's under hours. Okay, 19.
First page, 19.
Yeah.
You each have an email from.
Yeah, yeah, we have, each of us have an email from Michelle. This is the first time, if I, I had read, this is the first time the billing rate has changed in 10 years.
So, here, the billing rate is, is the billing rate. Um, our, our concern is, is a 54% increase from 19 to 20, and then, based upon some, I don't think it's in here either, but a previous information of, of a, of a substantial overcharge from this, 19, what, they're talking about $100,000?
They recommended 100,000.
Yeah, they recommended it, because we have, we still have a lot of, a lot of things in the works.
Yeah, no, but, so, for, for.
Here it is, right, hit the last character, hit it a little bit, just believe it's mine.
Here on the second page. What's that?
So using the, seeing at the top, then, FY '19, she refers to the estimated 100,000 legal expense, and she breaks it down.
I think the last time we checked, it was already 65,000 a month, it was 30,000 coming in, so we figured.
Right.
So, so this is, this is money that we will need to address for 2000, for, for budget recurrent, and, and I don't see it anywhere as far as how we're go, how we're addressing it. I assume that if we had free cash, it would be, we'd be talking about it as part of an article, but I really don't know. But what we see are, 2019, we've got an overspend of $35,000, and 2020, they're, it's recommended that that be 100,000 dollar line item as well. We, we, we're going to, uh, level fund it at $65,000 across the board, but we want to make it 100 grand, just put it to the town. I, I, you know, the, there needs to be a conversation as to what is the, what's the endgame here?
Well, she, well, town council will be here, and she can probably explain, too.
I, I think you should advise town council to be fully ready to explain what's going on, okay? Part of the things I'd like to see is some of the, you know, you know, of, of the decisions that have been made, what sort of progress are we making on, like cleanups on, on the, on the, um, Holcraft properties, various things like this. Did Holcraft say here two months ago, and, you know, Point Black said, hey, he's going to challenge every single one of these things? Um, I, I would like a much clearer idea as to what is the status of this, and what is, what is our legal, you know, are, are we, are we spending, throwing good money after bad, or, or, or not? And, and anyone else, you know, this, this be the nature of our concern in our conversation.
So let's start with the conversation I had earlier this evening, where I explained.
Today, you said?
Yes, I, I invited you to come here at 2:00 tomorrow to sit with Lucas and talk about his discussions with DOT, because this town paid a ton of money for a land-taking at White's Landing that we paid for. DOT said that it was good, $7,000 was okay, and it wasn't okay, because she lost, the court agreed that she lost business, and will continue to lose business, because her ability to launch boats at that site has been taken away. So we ended up paying eight times that number. Where I am with, with Lucas and working with Lucas is to recoup the town's expenditure of, or at least a portion of those dollars, because the town should, should not have had to have been impacted by that ta, land-taking. Specific to Mr. Holcraft, Mr. Holcraft has paid $6,000, that's not found here, but he's paid $6,000 in court costs and attorney's fees up until this time. He goes before a judge on July the 5th. That judge will make a determination as to whether or not he's paid the some $20,000 worth of fines that have been weighed, weighed against him. So if I take the $100,000, and I take the fines that he's owed, that gets back to 80,000. He's paid six, but he owes more in legal, town legal expenses, so we go from 80 back to 75 or 70? So now, we're arguing about 65 going to 70, just with that one ca, one, well, in the case of, of White's Landing, we, we're prob, we're, we probably are talking $40,000 that we're gonna hopefully recoup by splitting the deal with DOT. So that, that's 40 there, we're looking at Holcraft at 20 in fines, another six that he's paid, that again, isn't found here. I get back to the 65 pretty quickly, so I don't have a problem with telling the townspeople that next week.
That's, that's wrong. I mean, that's the first time, I mean, we, we heard that revealed, so that's great. I mean, there's, there's a plan, there's a strategy, and hopefully everything works out.
Specific, specific to six South Maple, if we talk about that for a moment, the court found in four out of five cases to the town, and the one case that, that they didn't, I wouldn't say they didn't find it towards the town, what they said is that he was able to appeal one of the counts on his freedom of information, so that that is yet to be determined, but on the four other counts that they found for the town.
And those are, those are like, facility laws or something like this, correct?
Yes.
Um, and, 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 um, uh, if, if he were to reapply or whatever else, I mean, would it not go away? I mean, why can't he just, I, I, you know, in other words, he's got an existing business, existing structures and everything else. Um, our, our case is saying there's no longer apply, what, I'm, I'm not sure what our stance is, what is, what is the town's position? And he can't be there?
Yeah, that's what we found. He didn't have a permit to operate a business. He in violation of the zoning laws of this town, and we let it stand from 2003.
We're cleaning up past.
We're passing, cleaning up since.
Yeah, he's been cleaning up since, and he had another, the extension was to win. He was given another extension to clean up the, um, Lake Road property.
But I think.
To the 5th.
To the 5th.
He, the court finding on the 5th is, if it's not cleaned up by the 5th, he can be.
That's July 5th.
Ju, no.
Oh, June 5th.
June 5th, next week or today or tomorrow.
No, tomorrow.
Yeah. He, he's before a judge.
Yeah, he's before the judge.
And it says incarceration if he doesn't pay his fines and everything else.
So, I think as long as it's explained that way to the town, I don't see there to be a, a big claimer on the 65, do I, or, I mean?
I don't think we're having fun doing this, guys.
No, we're not.
Did I say you were?
No, and then we have-
I, I, I'm just saying is that it, someone's gonna ask the question.
And then also, we still have the motocross track down there with Mr. Plurid and he has filed against, against the ZBA also, again. Something came in today.
But I figure that's, if the other ones are resolved, I mean, that certainly-
We start working.
Bear one, but we have.
Well, what we're not counting, and maybe we shouldn't, but we're gonna have to pay the bill and the, the $100,000 she's talking about, we're paying the bill. In this particular case, we at least have two suits where there's going to be returned to the town.
Right.
Clarence, that money that gets paid to us, is that going to have to process through as free cash before it becomes available for allocation?
Yeah, sure, that's, that's-
Okay, that's what I expected.
It goes back to the general fund?
Yeah, okay. One thing that I've heard was, there was a question to the Board of Selectmen about what is the endgame and Linda, you responded, well, town council will be there. I would like that, and that question, to my mind, should be answered by the elected leadership of the town. What are we attempting to do? The lawyers are acting on your instructions.
Well, I just meant by that, okay, all right.
The lawyers are doing what you're telling them to. So, the question is, what are we attempting to, I think, what, what is the endgame is, what are we attempting to accomplish with all of this legal activity? That is a question I would like to hear answered and I think people in town would like to hear answered. And I think, and I think it's important to tell people, this is, we are spending your money to these ends.
We had a solid waysite at 90 Lake Road. It's been that way for a number of years. On Google Maps, you can look at it for, forever and should the DEP fly over with his helicopter, right, Mr.?
Twenty-two years in Germany.
Yeah.
So, if, if they were to come, the town would then end, end up to be liable if we took no action, we took an action.
No, I, I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm saying, I was asked, that question was asked more on behalf of the town in that I think a lot of people are asking that question and so, and as appointed representatives of the town in the budget process, I am asking that question on behalf of the people of the town and I think that that's something that people of the town on the floor will want to hear answered to.
Yeah, sure, they deserve it.
I, I, I know, I, we have Ken on and we hear from the Conservation Commission, his role of Conservation Commission, we hear a lot about the status of Mr. Holcraft's properties from a conservation and similar-
It's never-ending.
No.
I, I hope we do get to an end.
What, what I meant when I said the town council would be there, if the town had questions to ask about any of these suits, she could, you know, any of our litigation, that she is here to answer questions also.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I meant.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree, the council would be detailed status and updates like that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, personally, the big point I was trying to make is that not everyone is aware of the history and everything else. I came in cold because of the yellow sign that was, whatever it is out there.
You're not up there yet?
And I still haven't heard all of the, the background, I'm hearing some of it now from you. So, I think, again, this is my personal feeling is that as, as selectmen, you might remember that there is, there are people coming and going in the town, so, again, I can use my abilities much better if I had the information to be able to help, you know, bring a positivity here and everyone else and doing their job for the budget. We have some of the background also and that's, that's more of what we're gonna try to work through the last couple of years. So, I appreciate you giving us the information, hopefully that'll, you know, town, you know, smoothly if people hear that, but I think that will come up.
I, that's all, we had to identify with the town, but, you know, we have already blessed this whole thing, I, I should have asked you to come here tonight. I had a couple of questions for you regarding this document, this kind of stuff.
Does he have the article on there and so we can get enough ready to keep our money officer going? Seems that he's running at seven. I mean, I know he's doing a lot of work.
Oh, you mean he's running low, well, he should probably see-
Zero, he's at a zero point.
Well, he should probably see the accountant when she's in here, she was in here on Tuesdays and he should probably come in and see her and find out where some money is, because she's been correcting a lot of problems.
On a related question, is the accountant generating updated account positions, I know, how the stat, the balance of the accounts?
Yes, ledgers, yes. Yeah, the ledger, she's doing the ledgers.
Okay, would it be possible to ask her a, as she updates, I don't know what her schedule is, but a, if she's do, if she's running stuff through weekly at, at some point in the, a regular point in the week, if she could cut reports and send them to us?
Yeah.
In fact, I did give her your email addresses, I don't know how often, how often do you send them out? Yeah, weekly reports.
Yeah, she usually does, well, Carrie used to do it monthly.
Carrie used to, well, Carrie would do it weekly.
She did?
Yes.
I thought it was monthly.
Maybe towards the end it was monthly, but it used to be weekly, but basically, I, I don't know how many she sent, I think she only sent out one, the new accountant, since she's been here.
The new accountant, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not sure what her schedule is, but I would definitely remind her and ask for this and that.
Yeah, and, and my thought is, if it's, I think monthly is okay, it's just, but when she gets those, if a copy could be, a soft copy could be sent over to me.
Yes, we told her, yeah.
Yes.
Because she, she's been straightening out a lot of the different deficits and things that are, that are on the bu, on the ledger sheet.
I, I, I understand there's a bit of work on my numbers.
Oh, yeah, she's been work, well, she's been working at it at home too, like on Thurs, you know, at home too, not just here at the town hall.
Yeah. Just on Tuesdays, what's up?
Tuesdays.
Regarding the war, I, I intend to, just a statement like last year, Capital had something from Capital, Capital improvement, I'm wondering if, if you've heard anything from them, perhaps we could chime in. There was a statement, article recommendations, now there's not a heck of a lot for anyone to recommend on.
I'll ask.
Yeah, okay, please do. I, I mean, I-
Beth gave us somewhere.
Yeah, Beth gave us, when we met-
Verbally.
Yeah, when we met two weeks ago, Beth had sat in on the meeting, she's, and she said that everything, I guess they, they recommended everything that we talked about.
If you look, everything that she told me, I put in there, I'm not sure if it included everything, like one of the transfers, I think it didn't, although they consider a transfer, the CIPC considers that still a capital item. Whatever she had, if you notice, she was looking from her notes, that was placed in there, it might not reflect all, but that's the information we had and that's what we looked at.
Okay.
There's no chatter or anything.
Your meeting with-
You got Peter to-
Yeah, yeah, if, if there's any sort of statement they'd like to incorporate into this document.
Well, it's Peter, but Peter was on-
Is he still here? I think he is.
He was here yesterday.
Hmm? Oh, he was here yesterday?
I saw him next door yesterday.
Not gonna be back for the town meeting, he told me, so I don't know.
I don't know, Clarence said he saw him.
I saw him last night.
Oh, then he's back, oh, okay, well, then I had wrong information, okay.
Anything else, questions for advisory issues, everyone? We're, we're-
As good as you're gonna be.
Good as you're gonna be. And then we will, then on the-
Want to say that?
Next, next Friday, the 14th, we'll be meeting at 6 o'clock and we'll have a joint meeting.
I have a thought.
Yes.
At, at 8:00, is-
What is your thought?
I think we should share the thought, that with the discussion that we had this evening on the two articles and knowing that there's 30 odd articles, we really should be thinking about a contingency of it not being midnight.
Yeah, yes.
So, really, I'll look to-
I don't think it should, I don't know if we wanna go on after 10 o'clock.
I'd say cut it between 9:30 and-
Cut it to 10, 9:30 and 10 and then we'll continue on the 21st.
I would say 9:30, that's three hours in, unless we're really close to finishing and you can, we think we can power through it in half an hour, that's where I draw a line.
Right.
Would there be a sense in grouping the spending on us, just as we did tonight? And if, if, you know, an explanation, this is, there, there's no free cash, this is just sort of business type stuff. You might get some discussion library or something like that or streetlights, but-
Library will definitely be a discussion.
Oh, yeah, the library's gonna be a discussion and then I'm sure with some of the different citizens petitions, there's gonna be discussion. I'm sure there will be a lot with Sharon's also and so, that's why, you know, we'll have, I think, 9:30, 10 o'clock.
Sharon, did you, did you realign them so that marijuana's first and solar's second?
I think you wanted solar first, right? Isn't that what you wanted?
Yeah, what?
Yes, I asked for solar first because we already had solar in town and I think that was a known quantity and if we went with marijuana first, I think the discussion was likely to be more protracted and it would prevent the second solar from-
Solar's first.
So, at that point, we'd be looking at June 21st, correct?
Yeah, yes.
But I didn't wanna leave here tonight without that in our minds.
That's what I told them last year.
Yet did.
Yeah.
And there's some good stuff that'll come out, that we can, we get on this, so everybody knows.
Yeah.